The meeting of the Folsom City Council for February 9th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Chalam Charla.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
And Kozlowski.
Here. If everybody will please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic, for which it stands, one nation on the broad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She, the Folsom City Council, February 9th, 2021. Um, will the clerk? Just as a reminder to those of you that are on the conference call version of this meeting to please mute your phones, we're getting a little echo after the fact here in the chamber. Are there any agenda updates?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number six has two updates. Those have been provided to the council and are available to the public on the back table.
All right, fantastic. Okay, um, business from the floor then?
You currently have no request to speak under business from the floor. Are there any callers on the line who would wish to speak under business from the floor? This would be items that are not on the council's regular agenda.
Okay, hearing none. Let's move on.
Okay, we will move to scheduled presentation, item number one. This is the city manager's financial report, including CAFER findings for fiscal year 2020 and the fiscal year 21 second quarter financial report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Stacy Tumani, Finance Director and CFO. Tonight's presentation will be on the results of the audited comprehensive annual financial report. We call that a CAFER, and it's for the year ended June 30th, 2020. During that audit, the city received an unmodified opinion with no findings. That's good news. That's the type of opinion that we're always working to receive. And tonight I'll also be presenting our projections for how we will end this fiscal year based on the results of the first two quarters, July 1st through December 31st. This first slide presents the results of the last two annual audits. On the left, we have fiscal year 1819, in the middle 1920, and then our projections for revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for fiscal year 21. And this is all for the city's general fund. When we look at these results, starting with fiscal year 19, this is when we saw an increase in our total fund balance. And that was right here, we had that $2.8 million increase. And that got us that unassigned fund balance of just over 17 million, or 20.1%. Now, the results for fiscal year 20 are in the middle column, and we used about $5 million of total fund balance, and that brought our unassigned fund balance down to 13.8 million, or 14.4%. And that's when you drop below your 15% requirement. This year, we're projecting revenues at 87.6 million in total and expenditures at just over 89 million. That's a deficit that we're running, but we are expecting that the CARES reimbursement funding that we brought in this year that was for expenditures last year is going to help us to only have to use around $400,000 of our total fund balance, with some estimated encumbrance changes there on the line below that, that would leave us with an unassigned fund balance of about 13.1 million. And that's 14.7%. The reason that the percentage goes up a little bit is because we're comparing it to a much lower level of expenditures because of the reductions that we made for this fiscal This slide here shows the same information, but going back to 2008 where you can see your your fund balance numbers, we have the blue bars are the the fund balance numbers in dollars, and then we have the orange line, and that's the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. Our low point on this graph was in fiscal year 11, and that's when we hit that $4 million mark. And we've worked to replenish this balance up through fiscal year 19. We were at 17.4 million, or 20% of expenditures. And then we dropped down last fiscal year to the 13.8 million mark. That's when you went down below your 15% council policy. And now we're projecting to end this year even a bit lower at that 13.1 million. Just for reference, we would need to be at about 13.8 to 14 million to get to your 15% minimum at regular expenditure levels. So we'll take a look at revenues and then expenditures. The final results for fiscal year 20 are in the left column, and then in the middle we have the current budget for fiscal year 21, and then to the right we have the year end projections for 21. At this point, property tax is expected to come in at budget, and that is an increase from the prior year results. As we talked about at the last meeting, sales tax and TOT is expected to also come in at budget, but those were those reduced numbers that we put in and much lower than a year without COVID. Charges for services is the revenue category that continues to be even further impacted by COVID. This is the Parks and Recreation Program revenues and also ambulance fees, among some other revenue sources in here. And we're estimating a $1.9 million shortfall from budget in this combined category. And then partially offsetting this, and I put that down at the bottom, is the CARES Act reimbursement of just over a million. So for revenue, we have about an $886,000 shortfall from budget. And I broke it out this way because I think it's important for us to look at what revenue we're actually bringing in through our activities and through our our tax sources. It's about 87.6 million in total, about 97.9% of budget. And then we have that one-time source with that CARES Act funding reimbursement to get us to the 88.7 million in total and hitting 99% of budget. This is looking at the revenues just a little bit differently. At the top, we have our tax-related revenues coming in at about 56 million in total. As you can see, if you compare it to that left column for 1920, we're up a little bit, and that's because property tax was projected to be up, and it is. And then offsetting that are the reductions in sales tax and TOT. Then the the other bold line there for the all non-tax revenue, we're expecting it would be 32.2 million, and that does include that one-time revenue from the CARES Act funding there. And then I just added a few other lines down here so that you could look at a few of these line items on their own. Development fees are expected to come in at budget, and so are building permits. And then we see two of our sources that are being hit here are Parks and Recreation Program fees. We're projecting it'll come in at 1.2 million in total. Of course, that's below budget, and it's about 35% of where we were last year at the end of the year. And then our fire charges for services, which includes ambulance fees, we're projecting will come in at about 4.5 million. So that's below budget and below where we were last year. Moving on to our expenditures in the general fund, we have the same columns as the earlier slides with the fiscal year 20 results in the left column. And when we compare the total for fiscal year 20, 95.4 million, to this year's projection of 89 million, you can really see where the the reduction's coming in here, is about $6.3 million reduction that was necessary to close that gap on those projected revenue shortfalls. The departments are all doing their part to keep expenditures down as much as possible right now, and we're projecting that general fund expenditures would finish the year just under budget at 99.5%. Looking at these lines on their own, salaries are expected to be over budget a little bit. We did have savings from frozen positions, and that's offsetting some overages for overtime, mostly in the fire department, in order to keep their their shifts staffed appropriately. We have benefits coming in under budget. That is due to those frozen positions and also no salary increases for the contracted employees, so that helped to keep that one under budget. O&M is projected to come in right at budget, and then capital outlay, we're projecting to be slightly under, and that and that could change as we go on through the year if different projects come in a little bit differently. And debt service will be right at budget. So we'll be at 99.5% of our 89.5 million budget. This is looking at the expenditures just a little bit differently here. By department, you can see that most departments are expected to be under their budget. I'll just go through the three that are a little bit over. We have management and budget, and that's up due to technology purchases, transitioning all of our employees to working from home, and being able to launch our virtual meetings with COVID, so that expense is recorded in there. We have the fire department, expected to be up a bit from budget due to overtime costs and vehicle maintenance. And then community development is over, and that's due to increased contract costs that are mostly offset by increased revenues that they bring in in development fees, and it pays for that contract. So as we continue through the remainder of this fiscal year, we're going to maintain that close watch on our expenditures, looking for savings wherever possible to minimize the use of the rainy day fund. And we'll continue to track our economic indicators, watching home sales and new home construction, tracking our building permit activity. We'll be keeping a very close eye on our sales tax results, and I'll be sure to keep you updated with those as we get those in the next two quarters. And then as well as our Parks and Recreation revenues, and be preparing to bring those back as soon as we can, as soon as the public health orders allow and it's safe to do so. We'll now take a look at the enterprise funds. The water fund, at at the top here, top right, you can see the water fund is projected to end the fiscal year with program revenues above budget, and that's the impact of the new water rates. And then expenses in total, just below the line, are expected to come in at about 13.2 million. That's right in line of where we were with the results of 1920, just about 13.5 million. And it is below budget, and you'll see that the main the main difference is in the operating expenses with a budget of 6.6 million and expected to come in at about five. And that's just due to contracts that are budgeted but not anticipated to be needed this year. And if we look down at capital expenses, we're projecting about 2.9 million in capital expenses for this year, and that would add to the working capital, bring it up to about 21 million. So this fund's in good shape for preparing for future capital projects. The wastewater fund is also projected to have program revenues exceeding budget, and then their total operating expenses are also anticipated to be below budget. Similar story, it's in the operating expense line down there where contracts are budgeted but not expected to be used. Capital expenses of about $500,000 are anticipated, and that would bring working capital in this fund up to about 18 million. So again, this fund is in good shape as we move forward for future capital projects. Your last enterprise fund here, solid waste, has program revenues that also are anticipated to be above revenue, above budget at 14.3 million at year end, and this is due to the new rates in this fund as well. And operating expenses are expected to exceed the budget at the end of the year. And this may be a conservative estimate, too, with all of the the new unfunded mandates that are going to increase these costs in this fund. Then when we add the anticipated capital expenses down towards the bottom of 2.5 million, that that makes us anticipate that we're going to end this year with a deficit of at least a million dollars in this fund, which would bring down the working capital reserve from about 5.4 million down to 4.4 million, which is well below the minimum reserve level suggested by best practices. Working capital for a fund with this level of expenditure should be at about 6 million. And obviously, using 1 million plus of reserves each year is not sustainable, and will be going down even quicker if the operating expenses increase with the implementation of the new requirements. And I just want to be clear that this fund is in a very different situation than our other two enterprise funds, and we'll need to quickly address this structural issue of these anticipated expenses that are related to the unfunded mandates, far exceeding the revenues that are in this fund by potentially a couple of million of dollars each year. One more fund to look at here is the risk management fund. Excuse me. And this this accounts for the cost of the city's insurance programs. This year, we did have a planned decrease in revenue, and you can see that on the top line. Last year, we had transfers in from the general fund to cover the costs of all of our insurance programs of about 16.4 million. And this year, we budgeted 14 million. And the way that works is we were able to keep expenditures down in the general fund by using some of the net position in this fund. What also happened in this fund is operating expenses have gone up, and that was a factor of the employee health costs, liability insurance, and a little bit of the workers' compensation. But what that did is this year, it's taking us from unrestricted net position of about 9 million down to 5.5 million. And this fund is working as it should. It allowed us to smooth out the costs of the the increased health insurance, the increased liability insurance, and also keep the general fund costs down. But we're really going to need to be looking at ways to replenish this fund as we go through the next budget cycle, because at this rate, we would have one more year, basically, of being able to use it this way. And this is a good example of some of those one-time sources that that we were able to use to smooth the budget and and reduce the hit to many departments, but it's not something that's sustainable to use at that level for very much longer. And just looking a little more detail down there, the employee health went from about $7.3 million last year up to a projection of 8 million this year. Retiree health is about the same. Workers' comp costs were up about $300,000. And then liability insurance went from about 1.8 to 2.3. So again, we just had some increases in those categories along with that reduced revenue. And that concludes the financial section of my report. And what I wanted to do now was just put up this slide again with these budget principles that I brought to you at your last meeting and give you an opportunity to provide any feedback or edits that you'd like us to make to this list before they're incorporated into the proposed budget document this year. And so with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right. I guess we can go around the horn for questions. Any from my right side here, Carrie or Sarah?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And YK?
I only have a comment, or maybe you can answer. When we have that unassigned fund of 14%, I know you use the best practices for one of those capital investment, the best one. Is there a grants associated? Our city should have this much unassigned fund to get certain grants to qualify? Is there any such a logic around?
Not usually for grants. It would be more for bond issuances and our credit rating.
Okay. There is a link between that.
There is definitely for that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and this may be actually to add a little bit more to the question you asked, which is, you mentioned as you were going through the the general fund information that we have a 15% requirement for the unassigned fund balance.
Correct.
And maybe you could just explain for everybody one more time how we arrived at that 15% target. That's useful information just for everybody to understand.
Sure, that that's a council target, but it's based on best practices. So you would want to have 15% of your total annual expenditures in your unassigned fund balance. So every year, as our expenditures go up, that percentage stays the same at 15%, but the amount that you need to get to that grows.
Yeah, so that's that's why we're below, and we ultimately want to build that back up. With regard to the expense, the expenses that we've experienced related to the pandemic, we got a little over a million dollars in CARES Act funding. What if either the city manager or you can ballpark it, is the excess expenses related to our response to the pandemic?
Told me to take that? The excess expenses would probably be closer to about 2 million, but what it doesn't take into consideration is all the lost revenue that we had from closing things down.
Yeah.
And that's where the bigger impact was.
Right. So the reason I ask is just simply because if if Washington ends up giving us a second bite of the apple, we want to make sure that we're able to ask for, to be made whole at least on the expense side of the ledger, because the other side's going to be much more difficult.
Sure. And what that doesn't also take into consideration would be salary and benefits for most of the fire department that have been working so much on COVID-related things that we're still paying those costs no matter what, but they would be likely eligible for reimbursement.
Gotcha. Okay.
It would be no struggle for us to come up with a very robust list of reimbursable expenses. Please be assured of that.
I suspected as much. Okay. Could you go back to the first page of the general fund expenses, kind of near the beginning, just for a moment?
This one here?
Um, the, no, the expense page.
Oh, expenses.
Yeah, yeah, right there. So could you just explain what the O&M line is supposed to be in terms of what those expenses are right there? Because the the change from 26 million to 19 million is pretty dramatic.
Sure. Part of the change in there is also related to that transit annexation that we had in the prior years. That was part of the O&M cost.
Okay.
So that's that's in the 1920 amount there. And then that's also where we were able to, well, we required a cut from every department's budget. So that was the main hit to the budgets was in that line item there, and that's for contracts and supplies and everything else that's non-staff related.
So transferring off the responsibility for the public transportation and then the cuts that we made, that's the that's the delta there.
Correct. That's the difference.
Okay, fantastic.
It was 2.6 million just on the transit.
Yeah, right. Okay, and then I guess the the with regard to the solid waste, if you can jump forward to that, that that enterprise fund. So you mentioned as you're going that the working capital target would should be $6 million for this fund?
Correct.
Is that is that a number that is relative to the capital expenses, the operating expenses, or the revenue expectation?
It's based on expenditures, and it's typically the best practice is 90 days of expenditures plus the year's total for capital. So about a third of the budget of expenditures plus 2.5 million.
Gotcha.
Is what you want. And as expenditures go up with with these unfunded mandates, working capital should go up, too.
Of course, of course. Okay, great. And then if you could just jump to the risk management page, and then I have my last question. So so in this situation, we had the perfect storm here of charges going down and expenses going up. What, just generally speaking, is your forecast beyond the 2021 year? Will that trend continue, or will this stabilize in some form or fashion?
Well, that's going to be part of the budget process. My recommendation will be that we continue to bring the revenues back up to where they were as much as we can, get back to the transfers that we had before. The reason the revenues went down was because we planned for that in order to stabilize the general fund. But we would want to replenish these before we, or I would suggest we replenish these types of funds before we add any new programs or expenses to the budget. So if there's any room in the budget for bringing this back up, it should go to something like this, would be my recommendation.
I apologize. Maybe I'm losing the thread here a little bit. My my question is more about, do you expect the charges for services to rebound, and do you expect the operating expenses to not continue on an upward upswing like this? Because both things happened.
Sure. Just to be clear, the charges for services you determined.
Right.
Because it's a transfer. So we we have control over that.
Oh, okay. My apologies. I did lose the thread there.
So that one we can we can control a little bit. And then the operating expenses, yes, I would expect those to continue to grow. But but we want to be following that with a consistent transfer from the general fund into this fund to cover those.
Would you expect it to grow $2 million each year?
For the operating expenses?
Yeah, because that seems a bit unsustainable.
That was a lot bigger than we had had in prior years. The liability insurance was not an expected jump to that that of that amount. So typically, we were able to cover the increases in the employee health, but this year it was more than expected.
Okay, all right, great. And then maybe we can just go back to the.
Oh, yep.
The things you'd like to include as budget principles. Any questions specifically about these from anybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Good as presented. Thank you. All right, let's call the next, let's call the next item.
Your next item is scheduled presentation, item number two. This is a follow-up on 908 Bidwell Street residential addition and remodel.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, members of the city council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. This information item is a follow-up to the council's previous approval of a residential addition and remodel at 908 Bidwell, which is in the historic district. The reason we're bringing this item back is to explain how the implementation process and staff error in allowing more demolition than what was originally approved resulted in a mismatch between the community's expectations and the actual construction process at 908 Bidwell. While the end result will be consistent with or more compliant than what this council approved, we want to summarize the issues with the process and identify the solutions that we're implementing to address those issues moving forward. I don't have a presentation in terms of a slideshow, but the staff report starts on page 47 of your packet for anyone who's following along, and there are some exhibits that I'll just make reference to in going through. So briefly, in April of 2019, the Historic District Commission approved design review and variances for a 1,635 square foot addition and remodel of a 1,200 square foot single-family residence at that 908 Bidwell address. The project also included approval of the demolition of a 120 square foot rear portion of the main building and an 81 square foot accessory structure. Within the historic district, as you know, approval discretionary approval is required for demolition. That is not true in other areas of the city, but it is in the historic district. That action was appealed to the city council, and the decision was upheld in June of 2019. The approved plans showing that action are in your staff report on pages 51 through 53, which include the site plan's elevation and floor plan, if anyone wants to refer to those. As approved, the modifications to the existing residence allowed for the demolition of a 120 square foot portion, rear portion of the residence along the the back property line, a 423 square foot addition to the main section of the house, a 350 square foot porch addition, and then a 606 square foot attached garage with a second unit of the same size over the top. The existing residence was approved to be remodeled to match design, colors, and materials of the existing residence. So three variances were approved for this project, and as you all know, we don't approve variances lightly in this community and really anywhere. The the burden of proof is very high, and we discourage them generally from being done. But within the historic district of our community, we have many pre-existing non-conforming situations with structures or lots that sometimes warrant consideration. And in this case, that was what was requested of the city. The city granted three separate variances for this particular project. The first allowed the existing rear rear wall to be removed and relocated six feet from the rear property line. It's typically a 20-foot setback. This is an unusual lot where there was a property along the alley. At the time, that rear wall was actually two feet over the property line, and there was a legal action requesting the the removal and relocation of that wall. The second variance allowed the proposal of additions to the existing residence to be located two feet from the left side yard or western property line versus what's typically a five-foot setback requirement. At that time, the existing residence was two feet from the property line, so it just allowed for an expansion to the existing non-conforming circumstance of the existing dwelling. And then the third variance allowed for development of a second unit on the 5,500 square foot lot, whereas the law at that time required, our local law at the time, required a 6,000 square foot lot to allow for a second unit. As you all know, the law's now changed, and you can't have a minimum requirement, but nonetheless, a variance was required and granted by the council at that time. The project was then conditioned, as they always are, to submit plans consistent with those specific approvals, which included a limited amount of demolition. So what happened? We were flagged, a historic district resident brought to staff's attention that 908 Bidwell remodel was being constructed inconsistent with the city's approval, specifically because the demolition of that original structure was more significant than the limitations that were granted by ultimately this body. Ultimately, we determined that he was right, and we did erroneously issue a building permit that allowed for more demolition than what you originally approved. As identified in your staff report, the 908 Bidwell project was originally submitted consistent with the approval with a limited amount of demolition. But through our building plan review process and evaluation for compliance with building code requirements, it was determined that that could not be built in accordance with the building and fire codes. So one solution was that the west wall could be set back three feet rather than two feet from the property line, and you could install fire sprinklers and still be allowed to, you know, encroach on that that five-foot foot setback and maintain generally consistent with the original approval. As such, the west wall along, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, as such, the west wall along with the rear wall was approved for demolition. And because those would need to be, those two walls would need to be removed, the foundations and corresponding roof structures also needed to be removed, could not could not be retained with structural integrity. As a, let's see, we got a question from a resident. We got a question from a resident about, you know, a plan that was approved that one, once, one sheet of the plan showed three walls to remain, even though the foundation and the roof and, you know, two primary walls of the existing residence would come down. You know, why, if three walls were to remain, did only one wall remain? And really, the structural plans that were in that plan set for the two of the three walls included substantial renovations. They had electrical panels, new doors, windows, things that would require substantial remodel or renovation to those walls. And anytime you open them up and remodel, then, you know, sometimes it's, it's easier to take them down and rebuild them because they have to be consistent with the building code. So they may not have been consistent with the building code. Our expectation is they likely had to come down at that time. So the building permit was modified and approved by staff for extensive demolition as part of that renovation. So while the community development team, myself included, I sat in the room more than once talking about the unusual circumstances of this particular request, we worked together to discuss and ensure that changes were necessary and would comply with all of the setback variances granted by commission and council. We ultimately lost sight of the special demolition limitations that were part of that approval. And ultimately, the permit was issued to the applicant in error, allowing demolition of those existing structures. So instead, what we should have done is we should have stopped at that point and said, this exceeds the, the allowance of demolition that the council granted and the commission recommended, or, you know, approved and then upheld. And brought it back to the commission to further review and confirm whether those entitlements and approvals for variances would still have been granted. We can't take it back at this point because the, the structure is down and we granted this erroneously. So in the end, the project is going to be built consistent with the design approved by the Historic District Commission and ultimately the City Council. But obviously, the process, you know, did not meet expectations, yours, mine, the city managers. And so we're here to say, we regret that, we apologize for issuing that in error, and here's what we plan to do about that, to improve that process and, and implement a better structure moving forward for, for the historic district in particular. The three things, and they're outlined in your staff report, is early technical review. So when we get preliminary plans for discretionary entitlements, they don't often include structural detailed drawings. But what we'll do in the historic district, where we have substantial renovations or existing, you know, pre-existing non-conformities, is that we'll ask our building plan check technicians to take a look at those plans and flag anything that they see may be an issue as we're moving forward with building code, fire code compliance. We will modify project conditions of approval. So if you looked back at the project conditions for 908 Bidwell, you would see there was a limitation about the removal of one particular wall. But we'll go a step further and we'll address that any additional removal or renovations of walls need to be considered as part of the process and require specific and special approval through the, the department for that kind of removal. So we'll flag that through conditions that will be carried over through our process. They'll be carried over in the plan check, they'll be carried on to the building set conditions that will be out there in the field for the contractor, for the inspectors. And then demolition notes. So right now, as I described, that's something that we actually note on plans, but with our improved electronic permitting system and plan check system, those are also things that we'll be able to flag in our notes. So within the historic district, where we have special limitations on demolitions or historic structures or variances or pre-existing non-conformities, those things can all be easily flagged in our system where it's more difficult and challenging to do now because it's done through, you know, notes on plan sets and there's, you know, one plan set in the field and one plan set in the office. But in the future, that will be something everyone will have access to on a dashboard on their computer. So the city team reached out to the resident who flagged this issue, the applicant, the appellant on the original action, and then other stakeholders who have weighed in on this process, including Historic Preservation League and the, and HEFA, to explain the issue and let them know that we're bringing this item back, both to the commission and to the City Council, to explain the error and what we're planning to do about it. At the commission meeting last week, we had three members of the public get up and express, you know, their disappointment, certainly in the process, their frustration in the process, and, and support for the conditions that staff is, you know, bringing forward and the changes that we're implementing. And also, you know, encouraging there to be, you know, some accountability. I, I think we're not asking you specifically for action, we're here to present the information and tell you what we're going to do to implement improved practices moving forward. So we obviously regret the error, and I'm here not, I'm here representing the department. And as I said, I was at meetings, I was part of those decisions. This wasn't, these weren't decisions that were made without my, my knowledge and participation. I do have our building official on the phone if we have any kind of detailed questions about it, but the intent is really just to be transparent and share information and say, this is what we're planning to do moving forward, and we're, we're sorry that, you know, that, again, you know, that it happened, that we, we allowed for the, the demolition to occur, and people are rightfully upset that it didn't meet, you know, their expectations for the project. So. With that, I will answer any questions that you have, and I certainly know that you received some correspondence, and I think there's a few folks on the phone that, that are interested in, in speaking.
Thank you. Comments from, or questions for Pam from anybody on the council right now?
I have a question. So Pam, when you talk about early technical review, when in the process would that happen? Will it happen before something goes to the Historic District Commission?
Yes.
Okay. So, because in this case, like, you know, for example, Historic District Commissioner Mickey Ann Kelly, one of the reasons he voted no is he said, you won't be able to do what you're wanting to do, right?
Right.
And so with that early technical review, we'll know that ahead of time.
We'll flag it, right? And we do ask that the applicants go through a process and do kind of a code compliance check, but without doing detailed drawings or opening up walls, that, that's not really a guarantee. But, but what we would be able to flag is the kind of thing that Commissioner Ann Kelly brought up, where, you know, you don't have a, a room that's landlocked without an opening if you're going to have a two-foot setback. You know, you need to have sprinklers, you need a minimum of three feet, things like that, that potentially could have been flagged. When we have a discretionary entitlement, we don't always include our technical building team, they're more on the implementation side of things, but we've asked them to become part of that project review team for specific items. So it'll be on the planning team who facilitates the process for the discretionary review that comes to you, to identify when our plan check team needs to be involved. And it will be significant remodels where we have pre-existing non-conforming circumstances or, you know, a significant historic structure.
And so will that only, the, the early technical review only happen for projects in the historic district or citywide?
Typically, I mean, we're going to focus on the historic district now in the near term, but it's something that certainly could be done. We, most of our remodels really of that nature happen in the historic district, but certainly it's something that could be done in other areas of the city as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, comments? Yes, YK.
Pam? Thank you for coming here and explaining this one. I know even at the review, agenda review meeting also, you were very detailed, you know, it's an oversight, we made a mistake, and this is what it is. And I like the fact about now we have an electronic system where we can put all the flags in place and we can go through in the process. I know you said you're going to develop, the flags is nothing but a checklist. Are you intend to go to several, a couple of groups in historic district? They are so passionate, they have so much pride on our historic district. Checking with them for FYI kind of thing, these are the things we are going to put in place going forward. That is an assurance, you know, telling them, hey, we made a mistake as a humans, but these are the things we are taking going forward.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one of the issues that came up at the Historic District Commission by Commissioner Dool was to say, really, a lot of these changes are things that, you know, some of them are our practical implementation and some of them are things we may want to codify or modify in the, in the zoning code itself as we're going through the update process. So we talked about that being really the appropriate time to have those high-level discussions about what we can do in our, in our processes and procedures citywide and/or specific to the historic district and, and have that, you know, an open dialogue about it. So that's, that's something we'll be doing in the coming months.
Thank you. And also, you mentioned, you know, in this process, you stop that act when they were demolishing or certain. In the future, after putting all these checks and balances and educating the builder or the developer, whomsoever it is, if they made this mistake again demolishing, that's where the historic pride come into act. Are we thinking to put some penalties on it? Because after we all do this, but still the wall came down.
Yeah, we, we do have a process in place now for red tagging something that is identified in the field to be, you know, a violation. Part of that is that it will rely on flagging that at regular check-ins or when we get a notification. And sometimes we get a notification from an interested party who sees something that looks out of whack, or, you know, they, they're concerned about, you know, where something looks like it's not being built correctly, right? It looks like it's too close to the property line. But when we would go out and do the inspection, we would see that it was too close to the property line. But as soon as we get a call or a concern, we'll go out to the site and check it. And if it's not in compliance, we'll flag it sooner than later because it saves everybody a lot of time and effort, right? So there, you know, we have set inspection periods during our process, but we also respond to, you know, to, to public interest. And in this case, that's what had been done, it was flagged, but it took us a while to figure out exactly what, you know, go back and track it and, and get to the crux of what had happened. And, and at that point, you know, really, there was one primary wall standing.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and at that point, it's, it's, it's too late to say, go, go back and rebuild anything or, or stop, you know, and go back through the process because what they were doing really was consistent with what we had allowed them to do.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah, agreed. On that one point, right? You know, don't, don't put that wall down because it is historic in nature. After putting all these controls, even though sometimes, let's go with by mistake, the developer put that one down or, you know, demolished, are we putting the penalties on him in terms of that? I don't know what that penalty, is there anything in place right now? Or if not, as a part of this, checks, are we going to put something?
Mr. Mayor and member of the City Council, if I may address that real quick, Council Member Chairman Chala raised an excellent question, and we do do that already. Luckily, we don't do that a lot. We have, for the most part, very good developers and builders and even property owners in our city who, who comply with the requirements. Once in a while, we see an odd situation occur, and a lot of times, it's because a neighbor reports the condition to the city, and then we go. We, like I said, we don't do this a lot, but we have done it in the past. We red-tag the construction, which means nothing moves forward, nothing moves forward. It doesn't matter how many contractors are on the job, it doesn't matter how many subcontractors are on the job, it does not matter how many days the property owner may have to stop work, and it costs us a lot of money to stop work. Until the non-conformity, non-compliance is fixed, we do not let the work to progress. We have done that in recent memory, a few years ago in another neighborhood, when a property owner's neighbor alerted to us that a two-story construction somehow appears to have three stories, looking from the outside. And, and that was not a, a, a good thing for the developer who's, who did that unilaterally without city, city knowledge or city approval. So we already have that tools in place. We try not to do it, we try to work with the property owners and the developers, for the most part, they work with us. If it was an oversight, inadvertent oversight, they work with us to get into compliance. If they do not voluntarily get into compliance, we stop the work right there. And the chief unit official, to give him credit, he's always careful in making sure that our office is consulted before he red-tagged a construction site, a construction project, because that's a big deal that stops everything, that costs us all the money. Once we validate there's a legitimate reason to red-tag it, he goes, red-tagged it, everything stops.
Good, thank you. That, that helps. And, and once again, Pam, thank you again. I can see, I can feel your heart as a department head for that area, and I'm sure we will, you know, put the checks and balances in place not to repeat this kind of, thank you once again being here.
The only other comment I, I want to make is that my suggestion, if this didn't happen, I don't know what the process was, how we got to this point when the property was sold after Madeline died. But if, if the architect on the HDC made, you know, made the point that you can't build this this way, there should have been a, a set of plans that was stamped either by the architect or an engineer that said, this is what we're going to do, especially when it was, when it was raised early on by an architect.
Yep. Thank you, appreciate that.
That would be my suggestion, that, that you've got something early on in the process that says, yes, we have a plan for doing this, an actual physical plan with a stamp on it. And, because that's the point at which this should have been discovered.
Yep.
Could I clarify one other thing? Just, Mr. Chalantirlo wasn't here, and I know Rosario, you were on the HDC when this was talked about, but the, the frustration is not that a historic home was demolished. It was an old home, but it was not historic. The frustration is that variances were granted because the existing home on the property was non-conforming, it already had these unusual setbacks, and variances were granted to kind of be consistent with that non-conformity. The frustration is that if the building was going to just be demolished anyway, and a new, new structure up in its place, it's possible that those variances would not have been granted in the first place, right? We would have said, no, you're going to, you're demolishing it, you're starting over, you got to have the normal five-yard, five, you know, foot side setbacks and 20-foot rear setbacks, and that's what the frustration is.
Yep.
Well synthesized, thank you. Do we have public comments that, on this item?
You do. You have one caller on the line who wants to speak. Beth Kelly, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Council. My name is Beth Kelly, Heritage Preservation League Board President. And as many people know, HPL's mission is to help preserve and enhance the historic district. The Heritage Preservation League provided comments on this project at 908 Bidwell Street over the past year several times. And in February, we actually said that we provided a very thorough review with lots of suggestions for alternative projects. We also said if a new main unit is to be designed, it should meet all setback requirements for the central subarea. We also said the building should be designed to reflect the pre-1950 design, so we recognize that that might happen. This project has had lots of activity and interest by the public, HPL, and HDC, and despite that and all the variances, the city's planning staff, as you know, failed to pay attention to this project and allowed mismatches and errors to occur. And while we appreciate the city's response to these errors and the proposed solutions, this is one more example of the lack of expertise or attention of city's planning staff for reviewing projects in the historic district. Over the past year in particular, HPL has reviewed many projects, and we've noted failures to meet codes and guidelines. We've provided comments on accessory dwelling units, parking, some other variances, setbacks, signage, building designs. All these are issues that we feel should have been caught by planning staff. We have made the recommendation in the past for the city to hire a staff planner with knowledge and interest in historic preservation. The historic district is a gem, it attracts a lot of visitors for uniqueness and history. Folsom likes to highlight this district and promote the Railroad Museum, the History Museum, and the unique boardwalk and shops. And the residents and streets adjacent add to the charm and history. However, bit by bit, the city is eroding the character of the historic district. Once it becomes merely eclectic and modernized, the history will be lost. So please allow this example again to illustrate the importance of having a person on staff with historical knowledge and dedicated to reviewing projects in the historic district. We also recommend that the city have a robust plan for staff reviewing projects in the historic district, and maybe that's what this technical review will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you had one comment submitted to be read into the record, but before I do that, I just wanted to make sure there was anybody else on the line who wanted to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. We will read a letter from Bob Delp, who writes, "Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Bob Delp, and I live at 612 Mormon Street in Folsom's Historic District. First, I would like to thank staff for bringing this item to you. Although I expect, expect it is too late to have a meaningful influence on development at the 908 Bidwell Street property, it is important that your council..." the 908 Bidwell Street property, it is important that your council be apprised of the circumstances." The staff report for tonight's meeting acknowledges that an errant process led to allowing demolition far in excess of the small amount of demolition that was previously approved by the Historic District Commission. Unapproved demolition that essentially removed the entire previously existing structure is problematic. More importantly, that demolition invalidated a key component of the Historic District Commission's basis for granting setback variances. Had the entire structure been proposed for demolition when the variances were considered, the commission could likely have decided to require the new building to comply with zoning code setback requirements. Since this opportunity for Historic District Commission reconsideration was not provided, we cannot know what the outcome would have been. Staff Report Solution Number Two recommends modifying conditions of approval to be more specific. However, the 2019 demolition, design review, and variance approvals granted for 908 Bidwell included a condition stating that development must comply with the site plan dated September 17th, 2018, and stating that the approval was for demolition of a 120-square-foot rear portion of the existing single-family residence. There was no ambiguity in that condition. Once it was determined that the project would not comply with the conditions, and certainly once members of the community raised concerns to staff in October 2020 after the demolition occurred, construction should have been suspended, and the modified project should have returned to the HDC for consideration. I know suspending construction is costly for a developer and is an action that should not be taken lightly. But allowing construction to proceed without the required approvals will have a much higher long-term cost to the character of the historic district. Moving forward, I hope staff will err more heavily to the side of acting on legitimate community concerns and bringing questionable issues to the HDC or to your council for direction. Thank you for your time. You have no further comments.
Okay. Any last comments from council members? I would just like to say that I think that the result here is good in a lot of respects because we identified a small flaw in our process. We took a project that was going to have some challenges that Mickey Ann Kelly from the Historic District Commission identified. Those have been resolved, one of the possible ways that they could be resolved. So the structure, in the end, is going to have the same look and feel as what was approved. It's going to be marginally safer because of it being set back slightly more from the property line. I think the response from the city staff has been open and transparent, which is outstanding. And I was actually concerned that the response would be an overreaction and that we would create a series of new hurdles for all projects in response to a pretty discreetly special project and set of circumstances. So I'm happy with the way we've, the staff has been able to find a way to sort of plug the hole in the small hole in the dike. So overall, you know, I take Mrs. Kelly's comments from the HPL very seriously because we do have a historic district that is special. I will say that, you know, not every single structure within the historic district is itself historic. So, you know, just to throw a tiny bit of cold water on that. But overall, I think the result has been good in a lot of respects. So thank you very much to the staff and city manager and Mrs. Johns. Okay, let's move on.
Next this evening is your consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item three.
Is there a motion on the remaining items?
I'll move to approve four and five.
And I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
And I just wanted to pull item three to recuse as Black and Beach is a potential client of mine.
Gotcha. Okay, is there a motion for item number three?
I'll move to approve three, item three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and one recusal. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Okay, that takes you to public hearing, item number six. This is a housing element study session and resolution number 10588.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Pam Johnzigan, Community Development Director.
Welcome back.
I have the benefit this evening of really just introducing the item. And as you all know, the housing element update is a mandatory process, and it's a long time coming. We've been working closely with the community and stakeholders and decision-makers to bring this item before you this evening. I want to thank Stephanie Henry, our senior planner and housing manager, who has been outstanding, has been doing an outstanding job of managing this effort on the city's behalf and in partnering with our consultant team led by Chelsea Payne. And Chelsea is going to give the presentation this evening on the housing element update. And Stephanie and I are here to help answer any questions as we go through that process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea.
Thank you very much, Pam. Is, yeah, if you could set that up for me. All right, wonderful. So, good evening. I'm Chelsea Payne with Ascent, Director of Urban Design and Planning. And as Pam said, I've been working closely with your staff on this housing element update. And I've, actually, my history goes back to the 2008 housing element update. So this is my third, third in a row.
I remember.
Update. I remember as well. And I also worked on the recent 2035 general plan for the city. So I have quite some background on this topic here. Here's the agenda for tonight. I'm going to provide an overview of the housing element, discuss the city's regional housing needs allocation, which is the city's housing target, review the inventory of sites available to meet your target. I'm going to highlight some of the key policies and programs that are in the housing element, and then talk about next steps in the process. So first, an overview of the project. The housing element, as you know, is an element of the city's general plan, but it has some unique requirements that set it apart from the rest of the general plan. The housing element has a shorter planning horizon that's mandated by state law, and it must be updated every eight years. The due date for this housing element update is May 15th, 2021. You do have a 120-day grace period after that deadline before any penalties would go into place for not adopting. The housing element's the only element of the general plan that's reviewed and certified by the state for compliance with state law, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development is the agency tasked with that review. Essentially, the housing element is the city's plan for how it will address its housing needs as well as accommodate its fair share of the regional housing need. This shows our project schedule. We kicked off the project about 11 months ago. Last summer, we focused on engaging with the community and stakeholders on housing issues and strategies. We had a meeting with the city council last July to get some early direction on some key policy issues. And then based on all of that input, we prepared and published the draft housing element in mid-December. We've now been collecting public comments on the draft housing element, and we held a meeting with the Planning Commission last month. And we're here in front of the city council to get feedback before we submit the housing element to HCD for their review and certification. We'll go through a process of reviewing the housing element with the state to address any of their comments. And then we'll be back to the city council for adoption in spring or early summer with a revised draft that addresses any issues that the state brings up. I mentioned the adoption deadline is May 15th. We're going to get as close to that as we can, but we may dip into that 120-day grace period. As part of the community engagement effort, we held an online workshop or survey to gather community feedback on housing issues and needs. We recorded a presentation and posted it along with a survey link on the project website, which is folsomhousingelement.com. This was available from June 1st to July 31st. And the city widely advertised this survey workshop and received 420 responses. We heard a broad range of opinions on housing needs and issues. While nearly half of respondents said that housing affordability is a top concern, about 30% said that there is too much housing or too many apartments in Folsom. The full survey results are included in Attachment C3 of the housing element. In early June, we held three focus group meetings on the housing element on the topics of affordable housing, missing middle, and multi-generational housing, and homelessness and other special housing needs. We invited about 40 different stakeholders, including affordable housing advocates, affordable and market rate developers, homeless service providers, and other representatives to a roundtable discussion. The feedback we received from each of these focus groups was incorporated into the housing element and used to guide the development of new policies and programs. So the first step in updating the housing element is to conduct a housing needs assessment. We collect data to understand the housing needs of all Folsom residents, including residents with special housing needs, seniors, people with disabilities, people experiencing homelessness. We conduct a detailed inventory of the land that's available for building housing. We look at potential constraints to housing in an effort to reduce barriers to new construction. There's a new requirement to conduct an assessment of fair housing to understand if there are issues related to housing discrimination or unequal access to housing opportunities. We evaluate the effectiveness of the programs in the existing housing element, and then based on the analysis, that evaluation, and all of the community input we receive, we update the goals, policies, and programs. So I'm going to first talk about the regional housing needs assessment and the sites inventory. As I mentioned earlier, the housing element is the city's plan for meeting its fair share of the regional housing need. This process of determining the city's fair share starts at the state level with the Department of Housing and Community Development calculating the future housing needs for each region of the state over the timeframe of the housing element. The Regional Councils of Government in this region, that's SECOG or Sacramento Area Council of Governments, is then required to develop a methodology to distribute that regional housing target to all of the jurisdictions within the region. So the projected need for the Sacramento region from 2021 to 2029 is shown here. It's about 153,000 housing units within the region, and Folsom's share of that regional need is 6,363 units. So in the housing element, the city must show that there's enough land zoned for housing to meet that number of housing units. This shows the city's RENA by income level. And the cities, you can see here that the city's housing targets for this period outlined in red are much higher than the targets that were assigned for the last housing element that are shown right next to that. This is especially true for the lower-income housing targets, which is the very low and low-income categories. This increased by 72%. Collectively, the city's lower-income RENA is over 3,500 housing units by 2029. So in the housing element, we have to demonstrate that there's enough land zoned for housing to allow at least this number of housing units to be built. And we conducted analysis of all of the vacant and underutilized sites in the city that are zoned to allow for housing, and we calculate the realistic capacity on those sites at various income levels. In state law, density is a proxy for affordability. So the more density, the more affordability. That's the assumption. And the vacant sites, so vacant sites that allow low-density, single-family zoning, those meet the above moderate income need. Those middle-density categories meet our moderate income need. And then high-density sites that allow for multifamily housing, specifically at 30 units per acre, are assumed to meet the lower-income need. So I'm going to go over, just at a high level, the sites inventory. We get to count several things towards the RENA. We count housing unit capacity in planned and approved projects that are in the pipeline that we expect will be pull permits starting June 30th, 2021. So that's the effective date of the RENA. We count the capacity on vacant and underutilized sites, and we've organized our sites inventory by the geographic areas that are shown here. We also count a reasonable projection of accessory dwelling units and multi-generational housing units that we expect can be built during the eight-year planning period. So the map here shows the vacant and underutilized sites included in the inventory, and then the table shows the capacity on those sites, as well as the capacity in planned and approved projects. You can see that the majority of our lower-income capacity is on high-density sites that allow 30 units per acre within two areas, the East Bidwell Corridor and the Folsom Plan Area. So in all in our sites inventory, we've shown capacity for 13,930 housing units within the city limits. I do want to point out that this capacity number on vacant sites assumes that one site at 2,800 Iron Point Road would be rezoned from regional commercial to mixed use through a specific plan amendment to the Empire Ranch specific plan. And this amendment will be brought to the Planning Commission and City Council in conjunction with the housing element adoption. And here's our projection of accessory dwelling units and multi-generational housing units over the projection period. So prior to changes in state law related to ADUs that went into effect in 2018, the city was issuing permits for about five accessory dwelling units per year. And state guidance is that because of all of these changes in state law that facilitate ADUs, we can assume a five-fold increase in ADU production during this next projection period, as long as we have strong programs to promote and facilitate accessory dwelling units. So a five-fold increase over historic trends would equal 194 ADUs by 2029. We use data from a regional survey on ADU affordability to estimate the income levels for these new ADUs, and that income breakdown is shown here. We also count multi-generational housing units. These are single-family homes that have a second, separate living space or suite. And home builders in the Folsom Plan Area have built multi-generational homes in recent years, and we anticipate that the production of this type of housing unit is going to increase significantly during the planning period. Based on an analysis by the Gregory Group, we're assuming 387 multi-generational housing units to go towards meeting the RENA during the planning period. So this slide compares the RENA to the total capacity in the inventory. We're demonstrating a surplus capacity in all income levels. However, the surplus in the lower-income category is only a little over 500 units. We do have some concerns about the city's ability to meet the RENA over the eight-year projection period without additional actions to increase capacity. Not only does the city have to show that there's enough land to meet the lower-income RENA, but the city must maintain adequate sites for lower-income housing throughout the eight-year planning period. There have been some recent changes in state law that will make it a little bit harder to maintain adequate sites. So if a market rate project is built on a site identified in the housing element as meeting the lower-income RENA, the city will need to make a written no-net-loss finding that the other remaining housing element sites are adequate for meeting your remaining lower-income RENA. If at any point during the planning period, you do not have enough remaining capacity to meet the RENA, you will be required to identify and make available a replacement site within 180 days.
Or what?
There's, there are enforcement by state, by the state HCD, and the housing element compliance could be revoked at that point. The city cannot compel the landowner or developer to build The city cannot compel the landowner or developer to build lower-income housing. So essentially, all of the sites in Folsom that allow thirty units per acre are counted as a potential lower-income site. But we do know that not all of the sites will be built with lower-income housing. You cannot deny a market rate project that's consistent with your zoning on those sites. So we expect that some of these sites will be built with market rate housing and will come out of the lower-income inventory. So for that reason, we're recommending that you build in a buffer of additional capacity. So based on the current capacity in the inventory, we have about a fifteen percent surplus, which is pretty good. But we, as I said, we know that there's demand for market rate housing, so we expect that over time, this surplus will start to disappear as new projects get built. We do have programs in the housing element to look at creating additional additional capacity to meet the the RENA. The policy document contains forty-eight policies that are organized around eight goals, and there are thirty-two implementation programs that implement these goals and policies. So I'm going to highlight some of the key new programs in the housing element. This is a summary of Program H two focused on creating additional capacity for lower-income housing to help create a buffer to maintain adequate sites over the eight-year period. There are three specific areas targeted for increases in density. These are the East Bidwell Corridor, areas surrounding transit stations, and the Folsom Plan Area Town Center. These are areas already designated for high-density multifamily or mixed use, where through this program, the city would explore further increases in density to expand capacity for housing. Increasing capacity in the Folsom Plan Area would require changes to the specific plan to increase the total number of allowed units. This action, Program H two, is targeted for 2022. The next set of programs address ADUs and multi-generational housing. Program H four is to develop an ADU design workbook to assist property owners with building ADUs. Program H five is about providing incentives to encourage the construction of ADUs, and Program H six is focused on tracking and monitoring the affordability of multi-generational housing to better understand who these units are serving and how are they meeting the regional housing needs. The housing element contains several programs to facilitate the development of affordable housing and infill to meet the RENA. Program H fourteen is about pursuing opportunities to work with an affordable housing developer to build housing at the Glenn Robert G. Holderina Station. Program H fifteen is about facilitating affordable housing on a city-owned site. Program sixteen is about studying the feasibility of using the Housing Trust Fund to purchase land for affordable housing. Program thirty-two is related to the SECOG Green Means Go program, which would look at ways to target infill development on Greenback Lane near River Rock Drive. Program H eight calls for adopting objective design standards as part of the zoning code update, which is already underway, and Program H nine calls for preparing a study of the inclusionary housing in Lufy and considering potential revisions to the fee calculation, and the fee study is also underway. The last couple of programs that I want to highlight are here. The first is Program H twenty-eight to amend the zoning code for compliance with state law related to homeless shelters and supportive housing. State law requires all jurisdictions in California to permit low-barrier navigation centers, which are a type of homeless shelter, by right in mixed-use zones and any non-residential zone that allows multifamily housing. State law also requires jurisdictions to allow affordable developments that include at least twenty-five percent supportive housing units as a by-right use in all zoning districts where multifamily is permitted. And then lastly, all jurisdictions are required to ensure that parking standards for emergency shelters or homeless shelters are not excessive. Program H twenty-nine came out of our focus group discussions. It's about exploring opportunities to bring satellite homeless services to the city and coordinating with SACRT on travel vouchers for people experiencing homelessness. I will note-
Just on the subject of the the RT situation, RT does provide free transportation to school students, but I I suspect that there would be an issue with simply giving passes to homeless people who would then live on RT vehicles. That's going to be a problem with the RT board.
Several planning-
We do have discount programs for people that that make less than than certain income, so that might be one way to handle that, but for them to just be given free passes to then live on light rail is not likely gonna, that's not going to work with the RT board, I suspect.
Great, thank you for that comment. We heard some concern on this program from several planning commissioners as well, specifically focused on the travel vouchers.
Okay.
So I think that's a good transition to the Planning Commission comments. We met with the Planning Commission last month, and the staff report summarizes the comments received at that meeting. One, a planning commissioner did express concern about the city's role in encouraging homeowners' associations to remove CCNRs that prohibit accessory dwelling units. This is currently addressed in state law. So that one relates to Program H four about promoting construction of ADUs. There were several comments on the program to track and monitor ADUs and multi-generational units, and a request to refine the program to better explain how this tracking would be done. This is a program that we expect the state is going to require, since the city is counting a fairly large projection of ADUs. So the state's going to want to have some tracking over time to monitor how many of those are being built and the affordability, but we can provide some more details on that.
And I'm not sure how we're going to go about tracking the affordability. All I can tell you is that the vast majority of the ADUs that currently exist, most of them in the historic district, are not even remotely affordable.
There were also concerns expressed about Program H thirty-one. This program calls for the city to require private developers to prepare affirmative marketing plans to ensure that marketing materials are inclusive of people of all backgrounds. The comment was to change this to say that the city shall encourage rather than require. This was a program recommendation that came out of the regional analysis of impediments to fair housing that the city participated in. On Program H ten, there was mixed feedback on this program about raising community awareness about affordable housing. One commissioner suggested expanding the program to better disseminate information about affordable housing to members of the community that might not have computer access. Other commissioners suggested considering eliminating the program since it doesn't directly relate to the provision of affordable housing. For Program H sixteen, this is a program to explore the the feasibility of using Housing Trust Fund money to purchase land to support the development of affordable housing, and there was a commissioner recommendation to eliminate this program, saying that the city should not be in the practice of using public funds to purchase land for housing. And as I mentioned a minute ago, there were also comments on Program H twenty-nine. Commissioners suggested eliminating this program about homeless services as it doesn't directly relate to providing affordable housing, but mostly concern was expressed specifically about the SACRT travel vouchers.
Just one other comment on the on the homeless services. That's really, a lot of that is already being done, and it's being done in coordination with Sacramento County, because that's where the vast majority of the homeless services live, is within the county itself.
Yeah. So this shows suggestions from the Planning Commission for some additional program ideas. One comment from a commissioner was generally to strengthen the program for ADUs. Another comment, as I mentioned, was to expand Program H ten to better disseminate affordable housing information to people without computers. And a planning commissioner also commented that the city should consider reducing impact fees for duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, both in the Folsom Plan Area and north of the highway. I just want to point out, this comment wasn't quite captured correctly in the staff report. We received a few comment letters from agencies in the region and from local residents as well. The Sacramento Housing Alliance is an affordable housing advocacy organization in the region, and they provided a comment letter on the draft housing element. They had several suggestions for additional or revised analysis, and we're going to be looking at each of these comments during the HCD review to see where some changes to the analysis might be warranted. But I do want to call the council's attention to the suggested program modifications. S H A recommended adding more specifics to several programs. For example, they suggested clarifying Program H seven about development impact fees, to be clear as to whether the fees can be reduced to facilitate affordable housing. For Program H nine, S H A recommended revising this program to review the inclusionary housing in Lufy more regularly. They suggested maybe every three years instead of just one time during the planning period. For Program one eleven, I'm sorry, for Program eleven, this is aimed at supporting local affordable housing developers. S H A wanted more specifics on how the city will provide support. They suggested holding an annual or biannual housing forum for developers. For Program eighteen, the Housing Choice Vouchers Program, S H A recommended the city provide incentives to get landlords to participate in order to promote promote more access to housing in Folsom. S H A also suggested several new program ideas, including a mobile home conversion ordinance that would protect existing mobile homes and at a minimum require relocation assistance. S H A suggested a new program that would commit the city to prioritizing the goals of its available funding resources, like the Housing Trust Fund, and then developers could design projects to meet these priorities if they were seeking funding from the city. S H A also suggested a program offering incentives to owners of multi-generational units that would agree to rent the units to very-low-income households.
Can I just make a comment about the mobile home conversion? That may be a bigger issue within the city of Sacramento and the county, but I don't know that it's an issue here. I've lived here thirty-six years, and we've never had a conversion of a mobile home community into into anything else. There's not been a single instance where that's happened in Folsom.
Okay.
So that may be happening in other areas, but it's definitely has not happened here.
Okay, great.
And that is, you know, that is, in some cases, that's a significant number of affordable units.
Yeah. The Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District also wrote a letter and suggested a new policy to require incorporation of urban heat island effect reduction measures in new and existing development. And as part of their architecture and civil engineering curriculum, students at Folsom High School reviewed the proposed housing element and provided feedback on all of the proposed programs. They generally expressed support for the programs in the housing element. One specific comment was to expand Program eleven to encourage affordable senior housing. So I was really excited to see that level of involvement by the students.
Pardon me if I'm wrong, but I know that the law was changed a number of years ago, that you could not provide all of your affordable housing needs simply for seniors. Has that changed again?
We do need to look at the needs for residents beyond just seniors. So yes, you have to look at-
Because I know when this issue came up fifteen-plus years ago, that was everybody's solution to the problem, that, you know, okay, it's perfectly fine if it's affordable for seniors, but we don't want affordable housing for anybody else. And the state, there are laws that prohibit meeting the need by doing it only with seniors.
That's correct, yes. I think the the recommendation was to add that as a housing type, recognizing a growing need for senior housing. We received additional comments and recommendations from SMUD today. We provided those to the city council as an addendum. Like other comments and recommendations, we are going to be continuing to incorporate recommendations as appropriate while we're working with the state on their review, and any changes that we make to this housing element will be highlighted when we come back to the city council for adoption later in the spring. So to wrap up on schedule and next steps, as a reminder, the next step is to submit the draft to the state. They have sixty days to review the housing element and to provide a comment letter. We'll be working closely with them during the sixty days to address as many comments as we can, to reduce the number of comments that appear in their letter, but we'll be back to the Planning Commission and city council for adoption hearings later this spring. Concurrent with the housing element adoption, we'll also be presenting some amendments to the safety and noise element to address climate adaptation. This is a requirement of state law that gets triggered with the housing element update. We'll also be bringing forward an amendment to the Empire Ranch specific plan to create a mixed-use designation and redesignate a parcel on Iron Point Road from commercial to mixed use. This would provide some more flexibility and help meet the RENA on that site. Because the adoption of the housing element is a general plan amendment, staff is going to also use this opportunity to make some additional cleanup changes to the general plan, including, there's one policy in the land use element that seems to imply the requirement for energy generation, which was not the original intent of that policy. It was, it's an additional policy flagged for cleanup. That's just to say that all of this is getting wrapped into one general plan amendment, one project that we'll be bringing forward to you in the spring. We're going to be conducting environmental review on the project. We're anticipating an addendum to the general plan EIR. So staff's recommendation is to approve a resolution authorizing the Community Development Director to submit the draft housing element for the 2021 to 2029 period to the Department of Housing and Community Development for review and comment. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and look forward to hearing your comments.
Carrie, do you have any other questions? Okay, Sarah?
I have a lot, thank you. Questions and comments for you, but also some for our city staff. So this is my first time doing a housing element. So none of the goals deal with design, like promoting good design, interesting architecture. Is that not something that's included in the housing element?
The details on that are generally addressed in the zoning code, and there are, there have been state laws passed to really encourage more cities to move towards objective design standards rather than subjective design. And I know that this is an issue that the city city staff is addressing through the zoning code update.
Okay, that's fine, Pam. I'll probably have some others, you can just address them all at the same time. As far as the the multi-generational units, in order to count those in the low-income, the occupant has to pay rent, correct?
That's, I think that's still up for discussion with the state. There are several points of discussion and negotiation to understand what the state is going to accept. We've had some early conversations with them, and our argument is that those units, they do meet a housing need. They're often either for maybe a student, a young adult, that would otherwise need a housing unit, or for an older adult. Often, these, those are family members on fixed incomes. So our our argument there is that they do meet a legitimate housing need, they can be seen as a separate unit, and should be counted that way.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I mean, I would imagine that the majority of people are going to use those units as home offices or for a family member. I don't see them renting it out to the general public, and I know the Sacramento Housing Alliance had some concerns about that in their letter. I do agree with with a lot of the planning commissioners' comments. H ten, Program H ten, I agree that we should take away the last sentence, "The city shall collaborate with local homeless service providers to raise community awareness on homeless needs in the city." It just seems to be too broad and could possibly relate to things other than housing. I agree that we should delete Program H twenty-nine altogether. I agree that we should delete Program H twenty-nine altogether. There's a couple places that talk about incentives for building ADUs, multi-generational housing and affordable housing. And I just, maybe just be a little bit more specific about, you know, we're talking about financial incentives, or exactly what is that? The Planning Commission's concerns about using Housing Trust Fund money to purchase land. Yeah, I, I would share some of those concerns. I guess just the way this is worded is that, you know, you're just exploring the feasibility. It doesn't mean you're going to do it, but maybe we say explore the feasibility and the appropriateness of, of doing that so that we could have further discussions. I agree with the Planning Commission that on that H thirty-one, when you're talking about the marketing for developers, that it should be encouraged and not required. Just a couple more general comments for staff. I know in this document, the area, you know, it's referred to as the Central Business District, or in this document, it's called the Central Commercial District. This is a particular area of interest of mine. And I think, you know, kind of the first step in the revitalization of that area is the rebranding of that area. It already has housing in it, so why are we calling it the Central Business District or the Central Commercial District? Let's just call it the Central District, and, and maybe we start by doing that in this document.
Just as a comment on that, it's, it's been called the Central Business District for probably fifteen years.
That's why I'm suggesting we start rebranding it. Yeah. Note for staff, the Sacramento Housing Alliance letter suggests that the city could eliminate the discretionary hearings at the commission or council level to kind of expedite things. And, and my recommendation is that we do not do this. And nine oh eight Bidwell Street is a perfect example of that. When projects are heard at a public meeting, it gives the public an opportunity to weigh in. And it also gives the governing body an opportunity to weigh in because we're the ones that are ultimately held responsible by the public for how these projects, you know, they're finished state. And so I would hate, you know, I'd hate to see some of these things be done just at the staff level. Again, not, not because I don't trust staff to do it, but because the process is important. So I do not agree with them on that part. And then I just have one other comment question, and, and this is not something that we're going to solve today. But when I read all of this and I read the, you know, the background thing and the demographics and all that sort of stuff, the question that comes to me is, what about the people in the middle, right? You've got the, the apartments and the affordable units and stuff for people who, whose income is such that they qualify for these programs. But you look on the metro list today, they're, the cheapest property in, in Folsom that's not a mobile home or not just a raw piece of land is $429,900, and that's for a condo. And according to, you know, the table, that C twenty-one that shows the different salaries, you know, a Folsom firefighter, a Folsom police officer could not afford to live in the city of Folsom, could not afford to buy a home in the city of Folsom. And I don't know if we're missing some sort of housing type, you know, some sort of product that's, that's more reasonably priced, or if this is just, you know, kind of a reflection of all the regulations and stuff about building houses in California. But like, let me see, in this, one of these goals, let me find my notes. In Goal H three, where it says to facilitate affordable housing opportunities to serve the needs of people who live and work in the community, I'd like to see it say to facilitate housing opportunities for all income levels to serve the needs of people who live and work in the community. Because I really feel like it's the people in the middle that we're missing here. And for now, that's all my comments.
Excellent, all right. Y K?
Hi, Chelsea. I know, I used to see you when I was sitting there, and you come all the time for various, you know, presentations that it assembles. You know, one thing on the H ten, you mentioned at the beginning, you did four hundred and twenty survey results, and over fifty percent are concerned about the affordable housing in Folsom. Did I hear that right?
Yeah, I would say there was, there was mixed results with sort of half of respondents saying affordability is in issue, but a good portion of respondents being concerned about more density or more housing.
Right, and on H ten, is there anything else we can do, at least in this future goals, to make sure our residents are aware, you know, their kids working in the local restaurant has to stay somewhere in Folsom, you know, by connecting that one? I, I, we do have a goal, but you helped in two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-one housing element as well. Anything we can put some more meat on that?
To raise awareness, was that the?
Awareness, effective awareness. That way, we don't have that fifty percent are so concerned about the, you know, affordable housing in Folsom.
Yeah, we do, we do have some programs in there about just having more discussions or community conversations around housing needs and issues, understanding also these, some of these state mandates that are, the city is required to address.
Okay, good, thank you. And it's a lot of reading, I know, since, you know, it's going to be submitted and still going to be, you know, reviewing and providing the comments. So I'll probably get back to you guys on later day. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Rosaria?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions that actually Carrie touched on. In, on page ten, when you look at very low, low-income, moderate income, how does that get broken, broken down into, say, senior housing, you know, housing for different other groups?
We, we look at senior housing in a different section.
Okay.
So that section was referring to the housing needs of people by income levels.
Okay.
But we are required to look at the housing needs of, of seniors generally. And so there's a, there's a separate section of the housing element focused on special needs groups.
So this group here excludes senior housing?
That would be inclusive of, so the lower-income residents are inclusive of lower-income seniors.
And then my other question, or I don't know if it's a question or most more of a comment. Accessory dwelling units, so on page fifteen, it looks like it's about one hundred and nine. But from just what my observation of ADUs is, they're very desirable. And oftentimes, they, they're not, they don't qualify under the, what I would consider low income. How would that get monitored?
Well, the affordability assumptions that we're using were based on a survey that SECOG did for the broader region that was included Folsom, but also other jurisdictions. And the survey showed that of existing ADUs, that fifty-six percent were being rented at levels affordable to low-income residents. But the monitoring program is in there to, to sort of check on those assumptions, not only on, you know, checking the number that are, that are being built each year towards what we're projecting, and also the, the income. So that would require some surveying. And I know city staff has helped participate in, in some surveys for ADUs and multi-generational housing. So it would, it would take some monitoring and, and surveying to see if the number are being built and what, what rents are being charged for those units, if any.
Got it. And then my last question, can you elaborate on H two eight, the zoning code amendments for emergency and supportive housing? Can you elaborate on the low-barrier navigation centers?
Sure. So low-barrier navigation centers are, they're a type of homeless shelter that it's, it's a housing-first model. So they're, they're usually coupled with supportive services to try to help people get into permanent housing. And the state law requirement is that those be a use permitted by right in mixed use and commercial zones where multifamily is allowed. And that's required of every jurisdiction in the state of California.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Okay, I'm gonna narrow my comment to one particular thing, but unfortunately, SMUD kind of beat me to it. Item seven point three, we should actually strike that. Seven point three says encourage solar on multifamily when we have a utility company that has a stated goal of doing entirely carbon-free electricity to us by 2030. So in the time period that we're talking about, they're going to be delivering green power and adding costs to a multifamily project if, in fact, it is a stand-in for affordability, seems counterproductive. So I agree with SMUD completely on that one. All right, and we, we will revisit this after we get comments from the state agency?
That's correct. It will come back for adoption at that point. We, we'd like to address any comments you have at, at this point and try to minimize the number of changes sort of at the adoption phase. Because we have to take any changes at that point, so back to the state for consideration.
Well, with, with that, with that being your stated goal, then let me ask sort of a global question about incentives for us and disincentives for us. If we are creating programs that are intended to raise awareness, for instance, because there's several of them that kind of use that as a stated goal, how is that measured? Is it measured? And is there some penalty for not achieving whatever that measurement is? So it's kind of that, or what question I threw at you earlier? If we say that we're going to raise awareness, what is the, what's the back check on that? And is it, is there something, is somebody from the state going to come and say, you know, survey random people and ask them if they understand our homeless housing policies?
So every year, you have to prepare an annual progress report and submit it to the state. So you report on your, your progress on implementing the, the programs that are in your adopted housing element. You also report on building permits issued that year and how many units have you built compared to the arena.
Sure.
The program evaluation, you would report on any progress made. There aren't any specific penalties. And a program like that, raising community awareness, I don't think that would be something that the state would focus on. And I wouldn't see any penalties tied to something like that.
So are, so are we overcomplicating our stated goals then by putting anything like that in?
Well, there is.
If there's, if there's no, if there's no back check on it, and all we're gonna do is either congratulate ourselves or flog ourselves for our own sake, what's the point of doing it?
There, I mean, there are several programs that it's at the discretion of the city to include. You know, I think when we get to the state level, it's not really cut and dry what's required versus, you know, versus not required.
Sure.
And that's something we'll have to sort of work with the state on. But I'd say if you have concerns about specific programs, it would be good to flag them.
So to the extent that you submit this to HCD, is the expectation based on past experience that having those makes it more likely for them to accept the bundle?
They do look at the whole package. They do look at the whole package. They also want to know that you, what your outreach efforts look like and what you did to address the comments received during your outreach efforts. They also take into account any public, any of the comment letters that they received from advocacy groups. So they do look at the whole bundle. I can't say clearly whether one program or not that's at the city's discretion would impact.
Yeah, pulling out one stick from the pile's not necessarily going to upset it, but, okay. So, so I guess just qualitatively, I, I would prefer that we didn't put things in that didn't have any great way of measuring them because it's just, it, it's making work, right? So I, I'm not sure that I can pinpoint any particular ones of these except for every one that says raise awareness. But I, I think just those are, those are problematic for me because I prefer to have goals that can be met. And I can say definitively that we have done so. So if raising awareness can be boiled down to update the website, you know, every two years, and send out in the newsletter every, you know, six months, some little update, if we can boil it down to actionable, specific things that we can then report on, that's fine. But just blanketly saying raise awareness, I think, is problematic for me personally. Yeah, and the, the issue with the green power, I think, adding costs to affordable projects by putting solar panels on them is counterproductive, given that we have a utility that's a great partner in that way. And that's not true throughout the state, but here in, in Sacramento County, it happens to.
And I suspect, Mike, that that's partially the result of the planning commissioners and the other stakeholders that commented on this document not having any idea that that's SMUD's plan.
True, 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 of course, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
My last comment, Chelsea, I think, as I mentioned, Pam, I think we can continue feeding the, any comments coming because we are still in public hearing, right? Until we get, while you guys are working with the state.
That's correct.
To receive the comments.
That's correct. So there's no, we're not officially closing any public review period. This, the document will remain in draft until we bring it to the city council for adoption later in the spring.
Right, thank you.
Okay, are there public comments that came in for this? Is anybody in the audience that would like to comment? All right, fantastic. So you need a motion to accept this with some modification to send off to H D C?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is a public hearing item. So if you don't mind, would you officially open public hearing on this item?
Absolutely.
And then close public hearing for the record?
Public comment period is open. If there's, if there's one last chance, if anybody would like to comment, this is the time. All right, closing public comment period. Thank you very much. Council, any last comments, questions, anything else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion then.
Some of.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozowski?
Yes, thank you very, very much. Good work. Okay, next item of business, please.
Your next item is Old Business Item Number Seven. This is a presentation regarding mandatory commercial organics recycling compliance plan under AB eighteen twenty-six and direction to staff.
Hello again.
Mr. Old Business, hello.
Old business, but very common topic tonight, talking about government mandates. Let's see, Dave Nugent, you're Public Works Director. And again, on the phone tonight is Marie McKeith. And Mark Rappaport, our recycling guru. So tonight, I'm gonna go over the commercial side of the organics equation, which actually has a little bit longer history. I want to update you on exactly what the background of that process has been, where we are with that program, where Folsom sits, where, where the state sees where Folsom sits with that program, and our compliance status, which ultimately what brought us here tonight to discuss, as well as our proposed plan moving forward to get back into compliance with the state and what those next steps involve. So history, back in 2014, Governor Brown signed AB eighteen twenty-six into law. It had a timeframe to take effect for local jurisdictions by 2016. And part of that was we were required to implement the program for the commercial organics recycling, which essentially entailed for, for us, education and outreach and annual monitoring. Wasn't a real heavy lift at the time, but it was an unfunded mandate with long-term timelines built into it that ultimately created a lot more work. So the thresholds that were, that are in the law was twenty, 2016 was eight yards of organics. Any business that, that generated eight yards of organics, like a grocery store, large restaurant, that sort of thing. Very few fell into that category, progressed 2017, they dropped that number to four. 2019 was kind of a big shift where they, they didn't just look at organics anymore, but they also looked at solid waste. So if they generated four yards or more of solid waste, which includes garbage, recycling, and organics, they fell into this category, which would mandate they had to subscribe to a organics recycling service. And last year was the biggest, biggest threshold, I guess, where any, any business that generates two or more yards of garbage would fall into this category. So to give you an idea.
Is that, is that the last step from the bill?
Correct. Pardon me for coughing. I'm, I don't have any COVID that I know of. I keep clearing my throat. For some reason, I, I got an asthma attack today, and I just kind of keep coughing. So, so in, in Folsom, we have six hundred commercial accounts that fall into that. Are you moving away? Maybe I should double mask. We have 600 commercial account holders that, that fall into the category now, which encompass about 2,000 businesses. So it's a substantial amount of our, our commercial businesses that fall into this category. Kind of seen this before, this is kind of the breakdown of, of organics and what they include. Compostable paper, you can see there is highlighted, and that really tends to look at our, our businesses, the restaurants and that sort of thing. I always throw out the pizza box, that's a, a perfect example of, of an organic compostable. One thing that is excluded under this law, and I'm going to try very hard to not blur the lines between this issue of AB 1826 with SB 1383 that I spoke about at your last meeting, which is the residential side. But one of the crossovers that's interesting is multifamily dwellings or multifamily development. They were specifically excluded out of this law, other than the Greenway side of the organics. So they had to, they had to comply with that, and they've actually done a very good job throughout the city to comply, comply with that mandate. So our, our program overview, back in 2015, in anticipation of this law, we, we started contracting with three private haulers to provide food waste collection for our, our commercial account holders. Little deviation was, you know, at the time, this wasn't really part of our normal operations that we would, we would do or provide. And since then, as we know, we're moving towards that direction. So that's one of the questions that's going to be presented to you tonight is which direction do you want us to investigate moving forward under the compliance? We letter, we mailed letters to account holders and services. We follow up by phone and email, and we dedicate a web, webpage for education for, for businesses to understand the program a little better, as well as provide online forums and, and all the necessary background. Part of our, you know, I, I talked about the, the number of businesses coming online with this program. So back in 2018, we, we had about 145 businesses that we contacted for, you know, hey, you need to get in compliance with this. And I said that there was a major shift in 2019. That number jumped to over almost 1,100. So a substantial shift in the people that were captured under this law, which, under Cal Recycle's definition of a successful program, is you have to gain compliance. The law states specifically our, our requirement to educate and provide outreach and to provide the service. That's all we're mandated to do. Doesn't mean we have to do anything else. So moving forward, these are the, kind of the breakdowns of our, our food waste system, our food waste status, those that, specifically restaurants and businesses that would fall into. The Greenway side was more of our multifamily development, and some businesses, commercial, they have large landscaping footprints on their business, they would fall into this as well. So compliance status, so back in 2019, we were, we were kind of put on an informal watch list because those numbers had jumped so greatly, we weren't able to keep up, we didn't have the, the staffing in place to provide and, and give the number of callback and, and outreach to the businesses that Cal Recycle thought we should. So they kind of put us on a watch list to saying, hey, you guys need to do more, you're, you're kind of, you know, on the weak side of compliance. We progressed through, limping along, then we all know what happened in February, March, April of, of last year. We, we, we basically lost our part-time staff, we had no more ability to, to, you know, provide these, this education outreach to our, our customers. And in October, we received a letter from Cal Recycle saying, you're, you're basically out of compliance. We said, okay, well, we'll, we'll update our compliance and, and kind of relook at, at our operations, what we were doing, how to improve those. We submitted it back to Cal Recycle in November, they reviewed it. And, and we kind of had informal discussions with them along, along the lines of, you know, what are you thinking? And they're going, well, it's kind of the same old song and dance that you've given us before. And that's where we kind of really worked with Cal Recycle to say, well, what is it you want us to do to get, be in compliance? We're doing what's mandated, we're educating, we're outreach-ing, we're providing service. And they kept saying, well, a successful program is 100% compliance. And we're saying, well, we agree, but we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, how do we get that? And they said, well, most jurisdictions have some sort of enforcement arm of their ordinance. And we're like, well, we're not mandated to do that and we don't have any appetite to do it. So they rejected it. At that time, we, we, we had an item before you to hire R3, our consultant, to assist us in 1383, and what, was the, what's coming next year. And we said, well, let's ask them to help us with this compliance. And they had a, a lot of jurisdictions, we're in the same boat we were, within our county, as a matter of fact, not just citywide.
Dave, how about our night? Yeah, I know, we are rotating.
Yeah, who's talking? I can't see any lips.
Right? We are rotating, so you may hear my voice that side last time. Is our neighbors are in compliance? I mean, I'm just out of curiosity here.
I, I can't.
It seems like 100% is quite a bit.
Yeah, I, I can't confirm whichever other jurisdictions around us are out of compliance, but I know that there are. Because again, they don't have an enforcement mechanism to penalize people because it wasn't mandated, so nobody adopted that. So they're in the same boat we are because essentially what we, what we got out of Cal Recycle was you shall adopt an ordinance that has an enforcement mechanism in it in order to be in compliance.
So, so question for you, but really probably for the gentleman to your right.
Don't say or what?
Yeah, no, no, what, is Cal Recycle actually able to penalize us for doing, to, for not doing more than what is required by the statute? Do they have that authority to make new state law all by themselves?
Allow me to answer this way, Mr. Mayor and a member of the city council. That's, that's a very good question. What happens in those kind of state agency framework is they will implement state law, but they also authorize to adopt administrative regulations, not part of the law, but that's the regulation those agencies adopt, and then they will carry out and implement. And that's basically what you're looking at, even though the law doesn't require Part D, the agency in the administrative rulemaking process requires Part D. That's what we're looking at.
So was the latitude granted to Cal Recycle to do that?
I believe so. I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, consistent with all of the state agencies, they have rulemaking authority.
Well, I'm not talking about generally, I'm talking about with this particular AB 1826, were they deputized to do these thing, enforce these things and whatever else you think is necessary?
In general, yes, sir.
Okay.
But, but they have to carry out those rulemaking process in, in public setting, just like we do here. But they also have, they also have to frame their rules to conform with what the law requires. So for example, they cannot adopt rules about automobile emission. That does not.
Okay, so they have to, they have to stand their lane per se, but.
Correct.
Okay, so the.
And that's what I was referring to when we, we pushed Cal Recycle to say, we're in compliance, we're doing what's mandated under the, the law. And their response was, but it says right here, a successful program is 100% compliance. You're not, you're not meeting the compliance, so we're going to push.
My question is, does 1826 say that 100% is the only level, the only acceptable compliance level?
That is their interpretation of a successful program.
Okay, so do we have legal pushback on this that we can tell them to, you know, maybe they need to rethink? Because they, that, this seems to, so first of all, 100% compliance is a ridiculous standard unless you're talking about, you know, O-rings on the space shuttle, right?
Right.
But the, to the extent that they can set a standard that is unreasonable, do we have some recourse in that way? Because if that was the standard, that should have been in the bill.
Yes, sir. So the answer is yes, we do have recourse in terms of petitioning in agencies such as this to reevaluate their standard, their rule.
Okay.
So it doesn't mean they will. It doesn't mean, it, once they do, they will change the rule, but we do have the right as the ultimate consumer of the rules, more, so to speak, to petition the agency to reevaluate their, their own rules.
Okay, I apologize for the diversion, please carry on.
No, it's, it's, it's a good discussion and it kind of leads me to the point of our, our next discussion of, you know, our, our compliance plan. So what we, the tactic we're taking with this is we know we have to institute an ordinance under SB 1383 anyways. That's mandated in the law, you have to have an enforcement arm. It will become effective in 2024, there's a grace period of, of a few years there to, to get compliance. Under 1826, we're supposed to be already at that point with the commercial side. So our intent is to come back with an ordinance, a draft ordinance, that would incorporate an enforcement mechanism both for commercial and for residential with different timelines of, of enactment for, for each. So that's just kind of a, a broad overview to kind of circle back, you know? It's like, why go to battle when we know we're going to have to do it anyways in, in, what, 10 months now? So that's kind of where we're going.
Doesn't change the fact that it's a.
We agree.
Unreasonable standard.
Dave, who's doing the trash inspection?
Excuse me?
How is the trash inspection being handled to find the violators?
It is self-reported.
City council's going to have to do it.
I'll check mine.
We'll, we'll move on. So, so in January, we, we contracted with R3 and, and they've been assisting us to get to this point right now. I touched on this a little bit, the compliance plan addresses some of the shortfalls that are, that Cal Recycle identified in our, in our plan, mostly staffing. We, we brought that up at our, regarding 1383, we've already addressed that, we're moving forward from there. We're, we'll be bringing back an item to you for, for additional staffing. We're hoping this one, we're going to probably be back at your next meeting. We're looking at targeted outreach and education for those businesses and account holders, more importantly, account holders that are not in compliance. And maybe I can just touch on the difference there. It's a, and I, I touched on this a little bit earlier in the last presentation, was a landlord or property manager of a, of a shopping site, whether it be, you know, I'm trying to think of one over in the Walmart Center. Multiple businesses, different types of businesses, you have food, you have other commercial. There's typically a property manager or a, an account holder landlord that subscribes for the services for their tenants. Part of our ordinance will craft that the account holder will be responsible for their tenants' services. Currently, we don't have anything that's really designates that point. And it, it's difficult to go out and do education and outreach to a business owner when, then they have to turn and go to the account holder and say, hey, I need this service provided, and the account holder says, I don't want to pay for it because it's a lot of money. So there's a disconnect, and Cal Recycle recognizes that, and that's one of the reasons that we're going to incorporate that in our upcoming draft ordinance for you to review. Another issue is we want to look at our contracted haulers. I had mentioned we have three of those right now for commercial organics recycling. That's probably one of the, the bigger questions for, for us to ponder, and I'm going to seek direction from, from your council tonight about that. Our current operations are, we have contracted haulers for, for this service. So we can keep that mode of operation and, and kind of stay a status quo with the way we operate. We can expand that and look at franchising. That's a heavy lift because our, our city charter prohibits that without going through, basically, an election. But it is doable if the residents so choose that. And the third one is.
But that is, that is a big problem because that, and that is the, it's trash hauling that is the reason specifically why that, the, um, no franchising was put in the charter to begin with.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure the history of.
No, trust me, it is.
Yeah.
How would that absolve us of these compliance issues, though? If we just completely were out of the trash hauling business?
No, we would, we would then have to have, within our contracts and our franchise agreement language built into it, that they shall obtain compliance and put the burden on them with our oversight.
Yeah.
So we're kicking, we're kind of kicking the can a little bit, and with that obviously comes loss of customer service and, and a lot of other issues. And the, the third option would be, we know we're going to have to do organics recycling on the residential under 1383, do we want to investigate bringing in commercial as well? Under one umbrella, we handle both commercial and residential organics recycling. So that's kind of one of the questions, and, you know, to, to ponder for you to think about is, do we want to investigate franchising? That's, that's, you know, I think it's, I think it's an extremely heavy lift. I think we, there's some, some loss there, there may be some ability to control costs a little better with that, because again, you know, we're, we would be handing it over to, you know, the waste managements of the world, that, that's all they do. So there's, there's pros and cons to that, if you want us to.
And it would, and we would likely have to wait for the voters to approve a change to the charter during a general election.
Correct. And that's, and that's one of the things in our compliance plan that we're putting forth to Cal Recycle is, you know, we want to look at our operations specifically and our, and our ability to franchise, and that would, you know, kick the timeline out, and they recognize that, but it still won't absolve us of, you know, having to have an ordinance in place under our current operations. It's more of a long-term, you know, do we want to look that direction?
Dave, under the current commercial stuff, I believe that I was told, just in the last couple of days, that there is a senior living community in Folsom that was one of our test cases, and I think they were having their commercial, their, their food waste picked up by one of the commercial haulers. There was at least one incident when they had been instructed by the commercial hauler that all the food waste had to be in clear plastic bags. And a bag of food waste ended up in something other than a clear plastic bag, and that location was forced to pay $150 fine. So did that go to the city or did that go to the commercial hauler?
It went to the hauler.
So why can't you go back to the state and tell them that there are fines that are being paid?
Well, that's between the, that's under the contract for the hauler and the, and the account holder.
Okay.
It's not directly to us.
Well.
And we don't have, we can't, we, we being the responsible jurisdiction don't have the ability to impose that right now.
Okay. But it, it, just for additional information, I wasn't sure if you guys were aware of that.
Yeah, we, we are.
Okay.
And of course, you know, the, the ever-popular last bullet item is a lot of record-keeping. They love their records. I talked about all this already, about our, our staffing, so I'm going to read through this slide. Ordnance, you know, again, they're looking for an ordinance that would have an enforcement mechanism to penalize non-compliance. I touched on this, you know, we're looking to require the account holders, not the specific businesses, to be in compliance, unless the specific business themselves are the, the account holder. And this is, again, all going to be mandated by SB 1383 starting January of next year. Our compliance timeline, we have five different tasks that we're doing concurrently, analyzing the necessary staff resources, which we've already begun. We will continue to do our education outreach that we're doing and, and hopefully increase that task with additional staffing, that's our goal. We'll be drafting an ordinance to regulate businesses and mandate that they participate in collection services. That will be coming back to you, we're anticipating the study session, as you saw in the attachment in your packet, sometime in April, we think is, is a good timeline for that. And again, that will be, it'll all be combined at that point, we're be talking about both commercial and residential. The review and negotiation of the franchise agreements is what I discussed, you know, do we want to investigate what that looks like? What is that lift? What are the pros? What are the cons? We can bring that back to you during that study session and really, you know, pencil out what that looks like. Will we have to, you know, do it at a general election? What are, what are the costs associated with that? There's, there's a lot of, of unknowns at this point.
And I'm personally concerned that that's even going to be, even remotely likely that the voters would approve that, particularly. would approve that, particularly in light of the past few years. The solid waste service in the city of Folsom seems to be one of the most beloved things by the residents and the smaller children.
I actually shared a clip of a small child getting a toy um from our solid waste drivers. And yeah, you're right. It it is um it is the forward-facing um thing that we do that people see every day. And it 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 makes a huge impact.
And it's and it's, you know, we do provide an amazing service. I can tell you just my own personal experience with the drivers, the driver in my neighborhood. Um and so I think that that is highly unlikely that that is something that the voters would approve. And I think that only puts us further behind the eight ball. So I think we need to um come up with some other alternatives. And my other suggestion is with regard to the outreach and education, I think that we need to look to the businesses in Folsom and maybe, you know, do that starting with the chamber.
Absolutely.
To see if they would set something up, because I know that's gonna be of of serious concern to the to the restaurant industry and anybody that else, anybody else that has, you know, food services. I mean, Intel.
Right.
That's a big food service operation out there.
Yeah, our our, oh, we know, originally, we had in in our compliance um plan going to back to Cal Recycle, our draft plan was um specifically saying work with the chamber. And we we removed it because we didn't want to just, you know, you know, obligate them to do something that we couldn't really obligate them to do.
No, no, no. What I'm what I'm talking about is is just um coordinating with the chamber because the that's that's how you reach the vast majority of the businesses in Folsom.
Right.
And I think that's just, it's a first easy step.
Right. And even if they're not a member of the chamber, their next door neighbor probably is. So that's a word of mouth that we want to re- reach out to. The hotels, I mean, the whole, everything, there's a lot of it.
The school district?
School districts are exempt. They have to, they have to
They're always exempt.
I wasn't gonna mention that, but you did. So, yeah, school
They'll look their dumpsters then.
School districts are are exempt. They have their, they're they're actually regulated directly with Cal Recycle, so.
Right.
Which is fine with us.
Big forgiveness.
And record keeping. So again, you know, we we had already addressed the staffing issue in our previous presentation under thirteen eighty-three. Um I guess our our direction, our our request to you is, it sounds like I'm I'm getting a a little bit of feedback on the franchise to kind of not go down that road.
Are are we having a public hearing on this?
No.
We're not. Okay. Um, yeah, I I'm with Carrie. I think the franchise idea is a boondoggle. I it's 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 not worth um transferring some goodwill that we have for a little simplification of some responsibilities that somebody's gonna have to hold on to. I'd rather keep it in the family, so to speak. So I I agree completely with you. It's it it would be, Chase, you know, an unnecessary step, I think.
And I believe at this point that the only person who may have, I believe, was involved in the writing of that portion of the charter was Bob Hollerness. And if I remember correctly, it had to do with the the neighbor of a former council member being very high up in a company that is a commercial trash hauler. And the council member was trying to influence moving business to that particular firm. And that's how it ended up in the charter.
Didn't one of the franchise haulers decide to move to Texas from our fine city? So
It wasn't that one.
Either way, they can all stay out in the cold, as far as I'm concerned. Um the um a- as it relates to implement, you know, um penalties for the customers, um what what would you suspect, and not in dollar terms, but what do you suspect are the the costs to the city of non-compliance? Because based on your presentation from last time, it seems like the cost of handling s- food waste and green waste is actually higher than trash. So i- is is there a perverse incentive in in that if we have people that are non-compliant, it actually reduces our costs? You don't have to answer that one. That's a rhetorical question for tonight. Um but I guess I guess the if we're gonna if we're gonna have a discussion of penalties for non-compliance, I'd I'd like to make sure that we stay carefully within the boundaries of what additional costs there are to the city as a result of that non-compliance.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um so that we don't, um, you know, create unnecessarily burdensome penalties unless Cal Recycle has some, you know, idea of what a hundred percent compliance penalties are.
Well, they are written into the law in thirteen eighty-three. They're prescriptive penalties.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not all that onerous, as I recall.
Uh, no, I believe it's fifty dollars for the first offense and up to five hundred for more than three in a year per offense.
That's pretty terrible, but
Per, yeah, per per. But again,
Yeah.
Like you said, you know, we don't want to
To the extent
incentivize non-compliance because of the lack of penalty either.
Especially since it's self-reported.
Well, that will change under thirteen eighty-three. We will have, we will have to, we will provide, we will have to provide um inspection services to do spot checks along the way. A lot of a lot jurisdictions are looking at cameras. So when the when the, you know, when it dumps in, there'll be a recording of the camera of the garbage going in.
A camera on the truck?
On the truck.
So there was a
I'm just not sure how you're gonna be able to tell what's in the truck, what's what's in the waste stream by a camera. But that's just me.
Something that's been rattling around in my head since I listened to a podcast like five years ago. Apparently, in Taiwan or someplace, the the trash trucks have different music playing like ice cream trucks, depending on what they're picking up.
Oh.
Think about that. YK, any questions?
That is very true. That's exactly how I remembered when I was a kid. You know, you know which truck is coming.
I think that would be fun, actually.
Allow me to address the penalty piece real quick, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. There's a a possibility where we could pre, we could create incentive as opposed to a penalty
Love that idea.
in there. Those folks, businesses are in compliance, they get a reduced rate, some kind of small discount, a reasonable discount. But i- the moment they are all of compliance, then they pull, they pay the full freight. So that that's a, that's a reverse incentive, but it's, it can be structured as a penalty in that situation. So we're looking to that.
And we will certainly look at that as part of our rate study.
Gotcha. Okay, good. All right.
Yeah, uh, my primary one is the, Dave, um outreach and education. In my view, it think if we can put our act together, we can quickly reach out to our Folsom residents. That probably I'm going to weigh in as, you know, top one, you know, how we can get close to, you know, attention to the state. That's my number one, you know, how to do, I know, I I'm not going to tell you how to do the, but I'm happy to talk offline, uh however it is.
Yeah, the the residential side, we're, we have a pretty robust um education outreach platforms already through all of our social media. Even within our our department, we have Recollect with, which is an online app that we can push out notifications to residents. You know, we already do it for people that subscribe, um whether it's their, you know, it's a, it's a green waste week or it's a recycling week. And people get that notification the night before. So we have a lot of that. It's the, it's the commercial side that we're really want to focus in on now, working with the chamber, working with, you know, um the hotel industry, and those sorts of things to really get them into compliance.
Yeah, th- that's my recommendation. And also knowing our neighbors, how they are doing it. If they are with a, you know, franchisee, then there is nothing we need to learn from them, you know. It's not between city or the resident. So learning that is also helps, you know, how we can quickly get. I know you are asking this evening for this proposal, not knowing those, I don't know how I can proceed with those plans. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, this is the the draft plan that we've come up with, those in your packet. Um, you know, I've got it if you really want to bring it up and go through the all the, all the, all the different tasks that we have a assigned in there. But I really boiled it down to the two, two areas we're looking for direction is the franchising and and how deeply do you want us to look into that? And um and and where we go from there. And then the other one is moving forward with combining um this regulation under eighteen twenty-six with thirteen eighty-three under the ordinance and bringing that forward, you know, bringing it forward more quickly with different um timelines to enact the penalty phases.
Yeah.
Think of all the time we just saved you, not having to do the franchise stuff.
Excuse me?
We just saved you a whole bunch of time. You don't have to do the franchise stuff now.
Yes.
I I also support keeping it in-house and also combining the commercial and residential.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Excellent. Okay. Um Sarah?
So I just want like a a real world example here. So I think you said that starting in two thousand twenty, businesses that produce over two yards of any kind of waste, right? Solid waste, green waste, regular recycling are subject to this.
Yeah. So in in twenty seventeen, they dropped the bar to four yards of organics. In twenty nineteen, they dropped it to four yards of any waste. So they captured all recycling, cardboard.
Right. And so like in in my little office where our family has a business, there's, there's three businesses within that building. It's the property manager if who's supposed to be providing this service to us if we have over two yards of solid waste.
Correct.
And and that's two yards of solid waste every pickup? Or what is it?
Weekly, I believe.
Weekly, okay. And just give me a visual, like our gray garbage can, what does that hold?
I don't know. Mark, Mark, are you on the line?
That's a sixty gallon, I believe.
Well, there's ninety-five tote, ninety-five gallon and sixty gallon.
Fill up the regular size gray tote twice to get to two yards, give or take, because it's three, it's three by three by six feet tall for two yards.
And so I I just want to make sure I'm understanding this part with the with the um city charter. If I'm looking at, I'm assuming it's eight point three, two point oh one oh. The city is duly, the city, its duly authorized agent servants or employees shall have the exclusive right to gather, collect, recycle, or dispose of solid waste within the city. Is that what you're saying is the problem?
No, it's actually in the charter itself. It's in the very first article under the the code.
Yeah, I am in the charter.
City Charter, Section two point zero seven D, S in Delta.
I should have brought that. I got you here.
Oh, okay. Two point zero, okay. Restriction on city utility. No city-owned utility or enterprise or any portion thereof which lies within the corporate boundaries of the city may be sold, leased for more than two years, contracted to, or put to franchise to any non-governmental party without complying with the procedures. Okay.
That's the one.
So I guess I don't understand, how is that different than what we're doing right now, contracting out with people to um pick up our 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 commercial?
That's a great question. And it's actually one that I've um been discussing with with our council of, uh, how are we contracting out currently under this provision of the charter?
I think we were doing it um when it first came up, I, if I remember correctly, it was because it was only on the commercial side.
Correct. Well, two, two things. One is, it's not a core service that we would, we would provide, but it will be beginning next year. So I think that's one of the, and and I don't know what our our former council, you know, how they ruled on that or why they came up with that.
That that's actually the reason. It was not at the time, council member, how a service that our utility provided.
And I I I think it was, it's just because it was on the commercial side. And if I remember correctly, um, I think that change happened when when Ken Payne was still here.
Okay.
Right about that.
So he might, he might have some historical information. He might want to give him a call.
Yeah. Well, and I I think, you know, we are where we are. And I think um what I've heard is, you know, it's probably better to bring it all in-house. And I think we really need to investigate that. We're gonna be doing it anyways um under the residential side because because of our charter. So maybe it's time that we, if we're gonna be providing that core service on our residential side, we have the capability, maybe we just bring in the commercials
Yeah, I don't want to speak for everybody. I think the, I think the idea of looking for vendors to service our residential customers is a non-starter. I think that if, and stop me if I'm going off of what everybody agrees with. Um I think with the commercial customers, if there's value to continuing to use a vendor for that pickup service, I don't have a problem with that per se, if we're already doing it that way. Yeah.
Yeah, I I I think what we need to investigate is that very question of can we still fall under our city charter and compliance with our charter under those circumstances? That's up to
Do we need to flog ourselves over that topic?
I think the best, the best way to answer that question is to find out, ju- just to recreate the history as to how we got here. Because I think that there was a previous point in time when the city of Folsom wasn't really, we weren't doing the commercial side at all. So that may be how we arrived at this not being a violation of the charter. Because at the time the charter was instituted, the city did not do the commercial side. We only did residential.
Correct.
All right, so that is the situation then? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
I could be, I could be wrong. That's why, that's why I like to get
Don't purposely bring it in-house if that causes more problems, I guess, is all I'm suggesting. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, it seems like there should be some cost analysis.
Yeah.
And absolutely. And and that is part of our rate study that we will look at very specifically.
I I do like the city attorney's idea, though, about incentivizing people to comply rather than um being punitive. And I'm fully supportive of sending a letter to the city and Cal Recycle and, you know, tell them where they can shove that banana peel, as far as I'm concerned.
We've got exactly two yards of solid waste for you.
It's crazy.
Talk, talk trash to the trash people.
Yeah.
Okay, are you, do you feel like you have enough direction?
Uh, I I've got enough. Okay.
Fantastic. It is delightful to talk about this topic.
Thank you very much.
All right, very good. All right, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we may be out of the traditional holiday season, but our businesses still need you to shop local now more than ever. Um, the city of Folsom will continue to promote uh supporting locally in partnership with the Folsom Chamber of Commerce. Our campaign will continue throughout the year with special promotions, videos, giveaways, and social media posts. A February slash Valentine's Day social media campaign will ask the community to show the love for Folsom and support local. Um, the public is encouraged to sign up to receive email updates about future COVID nineteen vaccination clinics hosted by the Sacramento County Public Health. Uh, visit the Sacramento County uh vaccination website for timely updates to this process. Just yesterday, I inquired with the county public health officer, who had let me know that uh this week they are still focused on vaccinating those over sixty-five and those working in emergency services, but hope to move on to education and childcare workers later this month. So please um stay tuned to Sacramento County Vaccination Information. Uh, the city of Folsom is committed to providing reliable water and wastewater disposal services to our customers. We understand that many are facing challenges due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The city offers several residential and business assistance programs designed to help during difficult times. In addition, SMUD asked us to share that SMUD is offering its customers flexible billing options, discounted rates and waivered and waived late fees, and will not disconnect power due to non-payment at this time. And you can learn more about SMUD's relief programs at smud.org/here to help. Um, and then finally, uh, the city of Folsom is hosting a virtual community meeting for the Highway Fifty Empire Ranch Road Interchange Project from four thirty to six P M. on Wednesday, February twenty-fourth. The meeting will be held virtually over Zoom, and the public is encouraged to register in advance. And you can find a link uh through our website, folsom.ca.us. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, council reports. Carrie, any commentary for this evening, Ms. Hall?
The usual, the usual suggestion um that people obey the rules of the road, that people that are out walking, particularly in the evening, are not wearing all black clothes. You can't, you can't be seen. And somebody's gonna get hurt. I've I've seen people on bicycles with no lights. I don't know, I don't know why people choose to wear all black if they're gonna go out for a walk at night. Or if you're gonna go out for a walk at night, bring a light colored dog with you. At least that makes you a little bit more visible. Um, or it looks like we're headed for some more rain um in the next couple of days. So again, even more important that we actually pay attention to stop signs and stoplights and speed limits apply to you, everybody that drives on the road and as well as those um on on bicycles. Regional sand meeting is tomorrow. Everything's going well there. The Connector, Southeast Connector JPA meeting is, I believe it's Friday morning. Um, we have not had an RT meeting in a couple of weeks, but there's one coming up.
At some point.
And we missed our our review with Henry for other reasons that
That's okay.
I will not go into. Um, and I think that's it on the regional stuff. We haven't had a a Placer, uh, Sac Placerville um JPA, transportation JPA meeting. That's the the railroad easement alignment. So we haven't met in a while on that one.
Okay.
That's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Sarah?
Uh, just a quick report out on the air quality management Just a quick report out on the Air Quality Management District. I think you remember from 2019 when Mr. Gaylord represented us on that board. They have a structural deficit, and they wanted to take care of that by assessing a per capita fee on all member agencies, including the city of Folsom. I think it was going to be about $120,000 a year, something like that. The AQMD board at the time voted that down. So there still is a structural deficit. I am now on the Budget Committee, and we will meet next month, and then the full board will have budget discussions in April. So we'll see what staff recommends at that point. And then, Mr. Mayor, good job on the unusual State of the City address, just in terms of having to do it in a different format than we've done it before.
Very good. YK?
You know, I want to thank, you know, city, each and everyone who actively involved. I wish they could have been here on the recent Strom, you know, just 10 days ago or less than a week ago, you know, there are so many broken limbs and all those, you know? We did so fast, and some people were calling me. Whom should I call? I said, is it blocking the road? So if not, please, you know, we can put that non-emergency thing. I want to thank, you know, each and every, you know, staff member. And also Terry Frey, who is assistant to our Madam Clerk, she officially retired today, you know? She helped, I think, so many times when we were out there for campaigning and all the documents and all those. It's important to recognize, you know, such a wonderful staff, you know, separating from us for, you know, happy life and a good reason. So I want to congratulate her on her retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Chalantchela. Ms. Fry was, is an extremely valued city employee, and it was, you know, hard to see her packing up her things today, but we're so proud of her and so excited for her.
Right. Yeah. And it has been, I think, almost 60 days on this seat for me, sworn in on December 7th and 8th. I myself is questioning once in a while, how is YK doing? I, I want to thank my colleagues here and city staff for mentoring me. With that, good night.
All right. Rosario?
Yeah. I want to share that I attended the Greater Sacramento Economic Council Champion Program Event by Zoom a couple of weeks ago, and I was really, it was really great to see that the region collaborates in attracting businesses to our area. There were some highlights from that meeting that as a region is the number one fastest-growing large communities in California. It is number one in women-founded businesses in the US, number three for net millennial migration, number six for most diverse large city in the US, number 13 for best place to work in tech. So in addition, Sacramento is the number one city in the US for homeowners considering relocation. So as we see people leaving California, but Sacramento is an interest for people. But some of the highlights from that meeting was that we see, you know, we, as a region, we work in attracting businesses, but they also look at inclusion and ensuring that the people of color are, in our areas, are being elevated in the community, that they believe that when inclusion numbers go up, prosperity overall goes up, crime drops, and income to government goes up. And so it was great to see that there's a social mission for equity and inclusion, and that they see that as an importance, because ultimately, when we look at our areas in the region, we want to see, you know, our areas, we want to see people be able to purchase a home, which eventually has a positive impact in avoiding like gentrification and things like that. And I also want to give a big shout out to Elaine. Elaine, I was very impressed with an issue that I brought to you a couple of weeks ago about the abandoned camps, and you were on it. You are working on implementing some kind of system in place that is sustainable to keep our areas clear of abandoned camps. So I, great job. I was really impressed with the work that you have done just in a couple of weeks, and I know that it's not a finished product, but I was just, I was excited to see something happening, and this is what many of our residents want to see.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, and all the council members that are focused on this issue. And I turn over that praise completely to the Folsom Police Department and the Code Enforcement Division of our Community Development Department. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, just a couple of quick things, and an idea that came to me as you were reminding everybody not to wear all black at night. Perhaps for Community Service Day, rather than T-shirts this year, it should be reflective vests.
Oh, yeah.
And we can give one with every one of those brand-new trashcans we're going to have to give out for grain waste.
Good idea.
I would also like to thank some people for helping me prepare that, as you said, unusual State of the City address, particularly the Chamber staff, particularly Christine Brainerd, who's our Communication Director here at the city. Preparing 20 minutes of coherent commentary about an extraordinary year is a big, is a big challenge, and I had a lot of help. And then we, if, if people out there go back and watch some of the video of the event that happened after my speech, the discussion with Michael Corpiol from Mercy Hospital and Kate Dyer from STEM Express here in Folsom, and the doctor that Michael brought with from Mercy was very interesting, very informative, and I'd like to thank both of them for participating, all three of them for participating in that, because it was, it perhaps was the best part of the entire event. So thank you for the Chamber.
You definitely did a great job facilitating the questions that were asked. It was very good.
So anyway, thank you to everybody for doing that in the Chamber, for having a State of the City address for 23 consecutive years. It's a, it's a good tradition for us. The Sacramento Transportation Agency meeting that should have been tomorrow has been canceled, probably for lack of topics to discuss. The SECOG, on Monday, we had our Policy and Innovation Committee, which I am the Vice Chair of now. It is, we, we spent that time on Monday discussing housing policy in broad strokes and started with a very interesting presentation about the echoes that exist in the way that neighborhoods are arranged within Sacramento and other large cities that are echoes of redlining that happened a long time ago. And for those that aren't, you know, most people may be familiar with that term, but it was racial exclusion, you know, in both loan writing by banks and in property deed restrictions. So those, those have been outlawed, but the echoes of those things still exist in, in the community today. So it was interesting to kind of have a, you know, have a discussion about that. The regular SECOG meeting is going to be next Thursday, and we have the, I think we have finally reached the point, I guess in my estimation, that we kind of have, barring some really strange turns of events, the COVID monster a bit under control, or at least we've adapted to the new world. And with that in mind, I'm looking forward this year to adding some things to our city council agenda to discuss that we had shelved for a little while, so that we can look to the future, because we need to, we need to be doing that job as well. And one of the key ones is the governance guidelines that the Vice Mayor had proposed last year, and we sort of, we got off discussing about it and then had to put it aside to deal with a lot of other things. So looking forward to that, and I will call the meeting to close. It's 9:08, and we are adjourned.